And.
And are we sure we got audio working? Everything's working? Okay. All right, folks, we will go ahead and get started since we do have quorum here. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as a reminder for council members, to please make sure that your microphones are turned on so you see the green light. And for everyone who is in the gallery, please make sure that your phones are either on silent or on off. And City Clerk Domingo, will you take real call for us, please?
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Reeve.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Davis.
French.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here.
So we are aware that Councilmember French is on his way in from work and Councilwoman Davis may be joining us on Zoom since she is out of town. But we are here this evening to give input into what type of traits and attributes that we would like to see for the new CEO of our EDC. We do have Shane Williamson with us this evening. His consulting firm will be working with the city to find a suitable applicant. And this is our opportunity to hear from him and how he plans to proceed with getting this filled. And then also opportunity for us as council members to give input. So I will go ahead and turn this over to Shane. Can you hear us?
Good evening, council. Yes, I can hear you.
All right, the floor is yours.
Great, I'm gonna share my screen. I have a... Oh, I need someone to allow me to share my screen so I can do the presentation.
Madam Mayor, I had a question. Um, where's the EDC?
I don't know if they were...
When were we supposed to meet with the EDC and the consultant firm?
No, this is just a starting session of the city council. The EDC meets on Thursday this week.
They meet Thursday morning at 7:30 AM.
Okay. The initial ask was to meet with both them and the firm so that they would take part in this as well. But we have what we have, I guess.
All right, so Shane, can you put it out a bit? All right, so we have your presentation up on the screen. Floor is yours.
All right, good evening, council. So Williamson Consulting was selected by the Economic Development Corporation through a bid process to do the search for a new CEO and executive director. We have been doing this type of feedback loop with the EDC. And my council wanted the opportunity to provide feedback as well. So I want to first kind of talk about Williamson Consulting is a firm that I started a few years back. We specialize in community planning, fund development, resource matching, and talent acquisition. We have clients all over the state of Michigan and I currently serve as the principal consultant for the EDC.
Shane, is it possible for you to get closer to your mic? We're having a little bit of difficulty hearing you.
Sure, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Great, okay. So just to give you an overview of the process, my consulting firm was not selected to actually choose the candidate. So just to let everyone know, I will produce a slate of candidates that will then be interviewed by the EDC Subcommittee and then brought to the EDC Board for approval of a final candidate. So right now, we have the job posted. Through July 20th, we will be doing initial phone screens and vetting of applications. And then we will turn over a slate to the EDC Subcommittee and conduct in-person interviews. Okay, just to reiterate, I am responsible for bringing great candidates to the EDC. And at the EDC Board, we'll be making the selections. So there's a little bit of an outline of that process there. Part of this process is input by various stakeholders. I was glad to be invited tonight to talk to city council and hear what they're looking for. So tonight is council's opportunity to provide me with some feedback. And to get that feedback started, I posed three questions all at once. We don't have to go through each individual. I want everyone to be able to have an opportunity to provide feedback. But the first question is, what are the strengths needed in this position? What does council think those strengths are? What is important to the city when it comes to economic development? And then what are some definite red flags that we don't want to see in the future of the EDC? And so those are the three questions I wanted to pose to council tonight to then provide me with feedback. I'll...this is being recorded, so we'll be able to bring all this feedback into consideration as we build a slate of candidates moving forward.
Is it possible that we can do something about the volume? Can we do anything about the volume?
I don't know. There are being a lot of bugs out there. I don't know why people... I wonder if you should be... Should we turn off the volume?
Can we turn it down a bit?
I guess probably.
I'm assuming you guys won't want to shut this off.
Yeah. All right, we turned off the AC, so hopefully that'll help hear you a little bit better, Shane. Please continue.
So I wanted to pose these. Can you hear me okay right now?
It's better, yeah.
I'm gonna keep...I guess I'll talk. I'm gonna turn off my camera so you don't have to look at my face up close. Uh, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to pose these three questions to council tonight. What are the strengths needed that you think for this position are important? What is important to the city when it comes to economic development? And then what are some definite no-gos, do-not-wants, red flags in the future? And I'm opening...I'm gonna leave this screen up as we talk so you can see all three questions. But that's what we want to hear from council tonight, along with any other input you have around the next EDC CEO. And so if Ma...Ms. Mayor, if you would like to kind of let people speak one by one, well, this meeting's being recorded, so we'll be able to get everyone on record as to what they want.
Sounds good. So, yeah, Councilwoman Reeve?
Okay. Who's on the search committee?
So that consists of Ed Haas, who is the chairman of the EDC. Ed Haas, he's the chairman. Ben Wallace. Andy Zabluski. And myself.
Was that four people?
So do we want to go around and give input on the questions in regards to what we would like to see for the strength of this candidate?
Well, I'd like to know before we go around and ask questions, what was the strengths that the EDC gave to Williamson Consulting? What did they show them that they wanted?
So we had a...there was already a job posting that was created. So Amy, I think, worked with Ed Haas on it.
Okay. Because I guess where I'm coming from is to...for us to go around and tell the strengths that we would like to see, I don't think can be all that necessarily important, but it is important. We want to know what was giving to whoever was supposed to be doing the consulting. That's what I would like to know. Because whoever's doing the consulting should know who and what they're looking for if they're already hired before we give any info. So I kind of want to know, what did they give you, Mr. Williamson? What did they give you?
So as is usual on these types of searches, I've actually displayed on the screen, there's a position profile that the EDC has developed over the last little while that talks about just exactly what they're looking for in their next Economic Development Corporation CEO. It talks about how the EDC is formed, where they get their revenue from, the mission and vision, and then it talks about the specific responsibilities. So in general, they're looking for someone who's going to come in, develop business, help provide technical assistance to current businesses that are here, expand our second industrial park zone, build up a team of staff at the EDC who can then support all of those business operations. And then, of course, they provided a specific profile of knowledge and experience. Obviously, they want someone who has experienced in economic development or a similar field, can manage many projects, has hands-on experience with business. And then if you go down further here, they also have a set of skills that they would like. And again, just because we have a profile, I also sat down with the EDC last week and we talked about soft skills. You know, what's a good fit? What are we looking for? What did we...you know, what do we think we're missing as we move forward in our search? And so there's the complete position profile, the selection process, and then also it provides a profile of the community, which is like, you know, our population, what type of businesses we have, our makeup. That way, people understood where the EDC fits in the overall picture in Albion. So those are the things that were provided to me upon awarding of the bid so that we could then be seeking out those candidates.
So how many people applied for this job?
Applied for what job?
For the Beavis and Sons firm.
We had two official bids. Yep.
All right, Mr. Williamson, in the last 36 months, have you placed someone in a governmental role?
In a governmental role? All of mine have been public roles, but they all are not municipal, no.
Okay.
What qualifications at the other company yet?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't have that.
And that...
I mean, that was email?
Their information was like... The information that I read, and I just took a synopsis of it just to help you out a little bit, councilman Reeve. Their expertise were very, very extensive on their information. And so that's kind of why I'm asking Mr. Williamson. I kind of want to know, how would you go about...I see that profile, and I'm quite sure with the expertise that you guys have as council, I mean consultants, you're not going to just go by that profile. You have some ways and means and questions that you would ask for us, or whoever you're working for, to make sure that we would be able to get what that profile needs. So that's where I'm coming from when I'm asking, because you gave me the profile of what they wanted. No, I want to know that, like, that hard copy that they sat down and told you what they wanted and kind of the expectations. And how would you, as your company, would go about to find what they needed in that profile? Because just looking at that profile, we all know we can go da-da-da-da-da-da-da, and that doesn't happen. We know those people don't have those expertise. But to have those expertise, you would have to ask many questions to find out if they were capable to do the work that is fitted for Albion. So that's kind of what I wanted to hear from you. You're on mute.
Sure, so as I stated originally, the way this is...the way this process goes is that we have posted this position in several areas all over. We've started to receive applications. We will compare application qualifications based on what the EDC is looking at for skill set. We will then whittle those applications down to a slate of candidates after phone... You know, there's phone interviews that you have, usually reach out and have coffee with potential candidates. You do direct outreach to candidates you know who could be a good fit for the position. They apply, you whittle them down to a slate of candidates, and then you go through a formal interview process with the EDC Subcommittee. I'm sure that no one is questioning my skill set here, but you do ask questions like, what is your experience within business development? Have you worked in a TIFA? Do you understand what the varying funding mechanisms are for an EDC? Those are samples of questions that you would ask in order to screen candidates to find the right person to fit this job and then present that slate to the EDC. This slate will end up being between three and five. There may be more depending on how many applications we receive. But we generally like to get it down to three to five candidates that the EDC Board would then do formal onsite in-person interviews with, at which point that board and that committee will then make decisions about who they'd like to have as a finalist or a candidate for this position. Again, my job is really a clearinghouse of finding those candidates and presenting them, as many qualified candidates as I possibly can to this board so that they have a great opportunity to select a good, very good next fit.
So the next question I would ask you, so how is the geographic going to be? The geographic area when you slayed out? Because I hope it's not like bare minimum just because we have a consultant that is from Albion, Michigan. So I'm hoping that it wouldn't just be narrow to just a certain area. But how broad will you go?
So we've started at the statewide level and we're at the regional and we have a couple of postings that have gone national. So this is not a...this is not only an Albion, we posted it in the paper type of job. This is also being posted with the Michigan Economic Development Association. This is being posted with MNA, the Michigan Nonprofit Association. It's also being posted...it's been posted with the Michigan Municipal League. We also have sent it out on various online platforms as another way to really cast a wider net. And then we're also reaching out directly to networks of individuals who are in economic development to make sure that this opportunity gets in front of people who might be at that... Say, if they're at that director or senior leader position who's ready to take on the next role, that they get this in front of them, because maybe their boss isn't going to leave. Their boss has another 10 or 15 years as president of their organization. This might be a great opportunity for a very qualified second-in-command to come in and be the first-in-command here in Albion. So without belaboring the point, we are doing a search everywhere we possibly can. This is not a strictly in the 15 miles around Albion type of search at all. And I can tell you with...I can't talk about the candidates that have applied yet because the process isn't done. But we have over 20 applicants already representing a very diverse geographic region that is well outside of Albion, Michigan locally.
All right, so... I'm glad you're here, Williamson Consulting. We didn't know who we would be meeting with until last week, but we set the meeting about two weeks ago to speak with the EDC and also the search firm to let them know what our concerns would be for staffing that position and what we need specifically from the person who will end up in that role. That may be a little different from what Ms. Jackson said, but my concern is the actual person that we get in there, their qualifications, and what they will be able to do for the city of Albion. We know that the city of Albion is in dire need of development, redevelopment, and also growth. So I'll be speaking to those points and we'll go through a few of these things and then we'll get to your questions, okay? Sound fair? All right. So currently, what we're looking for and what the city needs is someone, a candidate, who has a history of working in a deindustrialized community, also a record of working in possibly small communities like the city of Albion. We know how badly the city of Albion has suffered from deindustrialization, from losing steel mills and other corporations as well. One of the industries that I worked in, printing, has left the community as well. I worked there for over 11 years. So we're definitely in need of different employment avenues and opportunities that will provide people with work, jobs, and entrepreneurship as well. So I'm gonna go through a list. If you have any questions or you want to interject, feel free. We'll have open dialogue about it, but I definitely want to touch on these bases, all right? So we spoke of deindustrialization. We also need someone who has experience working in communities with a large black and minority population and identify how they may help and remove some of the barriers to resources these groups face. That's mainly in entrepreneurship. We have a grassroots type of environment here in town with entrepreneurship where you may have people who sell plates out of their homes and that's their form of entrepreneurship, right? Vendors, people who provide different services, but they may not necessarily be acknowledged as being a business or may not be licensed with the state as a business, but not from lack of trying, but more so from lack of information and access to resources, right? So if you have someone in that CEO spot that will facilitate the type of information and access to information that these groups of people need, that's something that we need in this community. I think it'll also help with filling the majority of the businesses or vacant business space in the downtown area if we do something with working with people who are currently here that are currently running businesses, be it a food truck or other type of businesses that are similar to that. The candidate will need to have a commitment to cultivating leadership and success amongst local entrepreneurs as well. I think that ties into my last statement. If we find someone who has a history of doing this, I think they'll be beneficial for the community. It'll bring something different to the table than we may have not necessarily had in the past without just relying on certain programs. Like, don't just rely on the Rising Tide program. Let's cultivate different opportunities for people to learn. I'm not asking that we give people handouts. I know the majority of the people I come in contact with and speak with suffer from lack of knowledge and access to knowledge for operating different types of businesses that they would look to get into, but they just don't have a resource that's ready to them that they can just go and talk to and speak to and get the questions answered that they may have. Next... I would also want that CEO to seek out grassroots entrepreneurship, right? So at the Juneteenth event that we had here in the city, we had a lot of vendors that were just local vendors. They may do a little catering or, like I said, food trucks. Maybe they bake and sell baked goods, things like that. And those people who operate those businesses could easily operate a full-blown business in the downtown area and people would patronize them. But without them having the knowledge or access to getting down there, they're locked out of participating at that level. Mark Cole, you got something you want to add to that?
You pretty much summed it up. But yes, I'm very interested in the new person having a strength in helping black business and minority business owners with business space if they choose to purchase a space for them to work out of and, as you said, struggling businesses, because we do have a lot of those. And when I was doing a research about black business owners, a couple of things came up, like knowledge. Where do you go to get help with resources? And how do you get a building downtown and things like that? So it all ties into what you're asking also of this new person that will have this position.
Councilwoman Reeve?
Well, I'm gonna go back to...
Well, I'm gonna go back to when Amy came to Albion and they had the interviews of her and the other people who had came. We got a chance to talk to both groups. We got to talk to Amy, we got to talk to the other people who had been chosen out to be the runners. My, my, I say that, the runners up. And one of my things was, and others too, in interviewing, was the fact that you get a lot of the minority groups who are not familiar with the accessing of the information that you fill out for papers, for businesses or for stuff like that. And we asked that that person would have something set up to train them of how to fill out a paper when you're requesting a business or a place to have a business or the financial workings for having a business. And we asked they have workshops to kind of introduce people to how to do that. Also have something that teaches people who have not interviewed with, with, say, state, people from the state or people from the county, if they're going to have a business, have not interviewed with people like that, that they have a chance to work with them and get them up to part of where they can say what needs to be said. Look for the answers for what needs to be for the business that they plan on going into. And training for some businesses because you've got people who need different kinds of license for different kinds of businesses, may not know how to get them or how to, however it is, access the information for them. So have training classes for them and things like that. Have you talked to them? Have you got any of that on your list, Shane?
You're still on mute, Shane.
I can see, I was just going on mute. I can tell you that everything that you all have said so far has been on the list from the EDC board and the subcommittee. Obviously, they didn't get super specific into the details as much as you all are, but very much in line with where they would like to see this position go as well. Technical assistance is incredibly important. Helping local entrepreneurs, growing our business base from inside out. I mean, I'm a local business as well. I started here and we need, you know, and I didn't know what I was doing when I started a few years ago and it takes a while and it takes a lot of help. So I definitely hear that and that's definitely part of what we're looking for.
Senator Jackson.
So Mr. Williamson, the list that I have is, I was just hoping that we have somebody with the expertise that would look for individual that could deal with grants, state funding, national funding, development of federal programs for loans and grants, city development, someone that would attract economic development in our community. And developing economic, economic development in our comp, in our community from the east to the south, to the north, the whole surrounding area. So I'm just hoping that that individual is able to do that work with from the east to the west, from the north to the south of this community to help bring it to where it needs to be so we can continue to be a whole.
So we all have been able to list what attributes we want to see. What are the community needs? I know some of the points that we've already brought forth kind of touch on the community needs, but are there any other specific community needs that we feel should be at the top of the priority list?
Yep. I'm just from the city standpoint and just working, my office working closely with the current EDC office. I would stress that we need to really highlight that it's important to have a presence here in our community. Right now, I know I receive feedback from local businesses or potential developers or people who are looking to open businesses that it's hard to reach our current EDC staff members or member. So I would really like to stress that moving forward with this process, that it's very important that a position at that level, that they actually have a presence in our community, that they are approachable with all members, all groups, different levels of development. I think we really stressed on the grassroots and entrepreneurship, but that they really are invested in our community. I think that right now we're not getting that from what we currently have in place.
I can speak to that being one of the highest priorities from everyone I've talked to so far, especially the subcommittee. Having someone who supports business and is here in our businesses locally every day is going to be huge for the EDC. So part of the vetting process includes, you know, talk about willingness to be in community, willingness to be part of different organizations and boards, willingness to do service outside of work. And so I can, I can tell you that those questions are all being asked as we move forward through a vetting process.
Okay, Mayor, speaking to your point about what the community needs are, I think with the, well, from what I gather in speaking to entrepreneurs from the community, we have quite a few of them here. The issue that they face sometimes with the previous EDC and their treatment, they're, they don't necessarily get the, the help that they need. And that's a large barrier, especially when you don't have anywhere else to go. I've seen where they were referenced, a couple businesses were referenced in the documentation that was given to us by the EDC, but those same businesses were the ones who didn't necessarily feel like they received the help that they needed or went there to obtain, right? So it's difficult to understand unless you walk in the shoes of the entrepreneurs that are here, but if you talk to them, they'll be able to communicate better to you that there's not much help for the African-American population as far as entrepreneurships go, entrepreneurship goes. And it's difficult to get access to the information. Back to the point that Ms. Jackson was making, it's difficult to get access to grant funding. I've seen grants written for businesses in the downtown area that would also help out another business that's in the downtown area that happens to be black owned, that's real estate, that's being redeveloped. But the, the grant funding didn't include that property as well. So it's kind of exclusory as well. You get what I'm saying? So without, without speaking directly to them and me advocating for them, I would advocate that the new CEO needs to be someone who takes into consideration the fact that we have people here who are hungry to provide the services, the retail space, the different things, the apartment buildings. They, we have people here that are willing and able to do all of that, but they just are lacking in the information and not getting the help that they need in order to facilitate those things. So that's why, that's why we're here. That's why we're here.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, because thinking outside the box and not staying in our box is the problem that we're having here in Albion.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the, you know, a lot of these points we also brought up when the search committee met to talk about what are we failing at right now? And a lot of the talking points you all have brought up, those have been brought up as this is where we're failing our community right now and what we want to see different with the next person who's going to take over. So, yeah, but there are other points that you've all brought up that hadn't been heard before. So this is why we're here, so that Shane is able to put that as part of his vetting, that this is a priority for City Council. Did we have any other comments that we wanted to make in regards to community needs?
I think a lot more of those will be addressed once we open it up to the public for public comment.
And I would have really liked for that committee to be here tonight. I would like for them to hear what we're saying too.
And so, yeah, I mean, because, you know, I just, I'm hearing there was a decision made. But what I'm hearing is the expertise that we need for a headhunter that's experienced. That's yet going back to what I said the other day when we was here about people being afraid to do this, this and this in this city because of the things that have always been done the same way. And we need the expertise when we get to throwing dollars and cents out to make sure we're getting our satisfaction. Because to my knowledge, of what I know of, if I'm not wrong, when Amy was hired there, you guys went to some extremes and you went a little bit above to make sure we got her. And I think that's what we need to do. We talk about dollars and cents when we want to come into this city, but we have to do the best at what we have, whoever we get, to make sure that we get that. So then we don't have to worry about is, is this being side on this side or that. It, it needs to be outsider with the expertise. Now, if Mr. Williamson has all these expertise, then I'm, I stand, okay, I'm wrong. But I'm just saying we need that. So when we come to the table, it's not mess, it's not stirring up anything. We want to do the best for everybody in this community. We shouldn't be having to worry about if this race or that race is getting, it should already be done. And that's just where we at now today, is to make sure that we have a headhunter that is experienced and has the expertise to get what we need for everybody. And that's just, that's what we want to see done. But I see that you guys have already hired him. So all we can do is give you that because we keep saying, what do the people need? What, you know, what, what are they going to talk about? So they're gonna come up here and tell you guys probably the same old thing they've been telling you all the time and has anybody done any of that? So we're just hoping that this is day uno and it continues to go forward and not backwards.
Ah, that's true. Very true.
Because if it's not, then somebody has to answer for whatever.
I mean, it's no hurt, no harm, no whatever. I mean, somebody got the expertise and they here, we want them. But the expertise that we see between one and myself, I speak for myself, from one to the other, those are my concerns. That's just it. Those are the only concerns that I have. I want the best for Albion. If I start speaking, it's because I want the best, not the little. And then the big, you know, the big other words, the big other words that are coming out, I don't, I don't want to hear them, I'm serious. This is from my heart. I'm not here just to pick at nobody. I'm here to make sure we're getting the best for everyone, not just one darn race, that's all I hear. Race, they should, they shouldn't have to come here because they're black. You shouldn't have to come here because you're white, Mexican or whatever. You should be coming because you're here to do something for everybody.
So what are some of the red flags that we don't want to see in the candidate? Like you said, that different from what we currently have now?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, you know, I, you know, I really applaud you for, for asking those questions, but I'm gonna take it back again. If you hire somebody, they already know about the city because the EDC already told them the problems that they've already had and what they need. So that person gets hired, they get, they're being paid. Now, we're not supposed to tell that individual what to do. We can tell them the things that we like, but they gotta be able to find those red flags and make it better. That's why we hire a headhunter, you know? That's one reason that we didn't undo a search because we thought that we could take care of a city manager that we already had here, you know? And sometimes there's just not a dollar amount put on what we need here because we need the best.
That's true.
So are there any other insights that we would like to leave with Shane in regards to proceeding with finding the right candidate?
Just, Madam Mayor, if I could pipe in here, is that okay?
Yep, go ahead.
I just want to add, you know, the merits of my application and bid for this search met all of the qualifications and was a competitive bid through a transparent process that was open to the public. I'm proud of the work that I'm done. I'm excited to find a candidate or slew of candidates for the city of Albion, a place that my business and myself call home. I'm open to any other feedback. You can see my contact information on the profile or in any of the listings. My email is Shane@WilliamsonConsult.com. The other piece I would like to point out is that we are, we are just as invested in getting you the best candidates for Albion possible and welcome any and all feedback. And then just to kind of reply to this concern about what we already know or what we already know as consultants is, I'm doing this as a courtesy to the council this evening so that everybody in the broadest possible groups has input over this process and that way I can have all of the varying competing thoughts around what our next EDC director could do. So this is a really valuable time. If there's something that you absolutely do not want or do not care for, it's really good for you to put that forward so I can put that on the list as we try to personalize our, and tailor the list of candidates down for the EDC. So again, thank you all for your input tonight. I'll, I'll listen through public comment and if you guys have any more input, I am certainly available by phone or by email anytime to discuss with you your concerns related to this search. We're hoping for a really great solution to put in front of this committee to help move Albion forward economically. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Actually, I would like to have dialogue with the Williamson firm. All right, so since, since we got on the topic, I reviewed the proposal from the Williamson firm and it brought about quite a few questions. One being, well, actually I had quite a few. So I'll just run through the list and if you can respond or answer those questions, Mr. Williamson, maybe help us out a bit. Do you have a demonstrated history of placing black candidates? Do you have placement records or statistics that we would be able to review as a part of your consulting firm?
All of my, all of my content is proprietary and we also try our best to not delineate any sort of statistics based on race, gender, ethnicity, any sort of protected class information. We want there to be, you know, we're an equal opportunity employer. We are following the equal opportunity employment law and will continue to do so moving forward. So, and no, I, those things are not for public consumption.
Okay. Does your firm have a record of soliciting diverse community input?
Yes. With, with all of the organizations I work with, we work in all sorts of diverse communities.
Do you have? Okay, I'll, I'll take that for face value.
For, for example, we raise money for many educational initiatives in Battle Creek for this, for the, for a couple of organizations, arts organizations that work within Battle Creek. That's an example I can give you.
Okay. Now, earlier you said that you hadn't placed anyone with a governmental firm in the last 36 months?
We, I have placed senior leaders in public, in public positions in the last 36 months, yes.
Okay, we may have to review my prior question, but I believe the answer to the question I asked earlier, which was the same, the answer was no.
It depends on if you're trying to split hairs on whether it's municipal or public nonprofit. If, if it's, if it's just municipal, then no. I specialize in nonprofit placements. So those are also considered public positions. So those are also considered public positions. And to be fair, and, and Ms. Mayor, if you could be clear, when I was invited to this meeting, we weren't going to be debating the merits of my qualifications. That's something that's already been completed. Um, tonight was a night for the council to put forward input on the search process and provide feedback on what their candidate, what they think their ideal candidate would be. Um, I've already been through the bid process and I successfully secured this bid and signed a contract with the Economic Development Corporation. Um, so I would, I would like to kindly keep it at that content level if possible.
Okay, um, it's so gracious of the Williamson firm to take the time out of their day to be bothered with us. Um, that means that we moved to public comment.
Are there any other comments that you would like to leave with Shane to help direct him for this search?
I think I've touched, Madam Mayor, I think I've touched on everything I needed.
Yes, I have too. Everybody good?
Um, I have something.
Sure.
Um, it, it, it was brought up that you were, um, certified to do this search, but there were actually two things that, um, came into place, um, about placing people in municipality. And I can't think of the other one. Do you happen to have a thought on hand?
Um, no, that was the question he said no to earlier.
Okay. But, um, we, we just, this, we, um, brought that up because you brought it up saying about your qualification. But there was two things that I think this committee overlooked, um, to, to verify that you weren't, um, capable of doing a search, but that's another story. But, um, we do want to, uh, as a red flag, um, a person, we, we, we really don't want a person that's not going to help businesses with, um, startup money. Um, and, and a person that's not going to help with, um, businesses getting loans. That, that's it for me, um, at least two of them. So, um, if you could possibly add that to the list, that would be great.
Marco, I do have that other question though. You want me to ask it?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, and I'm asking this for Councilwoman Lawler. In the past thirty-six months, have you worked with a public entity like the Albion EDC to conduct executive recruitment?
So I think we were...
That's not the same question.
I, I, I'm, I'm just going to, any questions that the council has about the selection of Williamson Consulting as the firm to do the search should be directed to the, um, subcommittee and the EDC. That's, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Ms. Mayor, did you not know those two questions as far as, um, it be, um, you being on the committee? Um, those two things that, those two requirements, um, for a firm to do the search? Were you not aware of those two?
So we did look, you know, like I was saying, it was only two firms that submitted proposals. Um, and the board wanted to definitely proceed with Shane's consulting firm, um, because he has the insight of our community. But also still has the connections that, you know, we were looking for in regards to getting this posting out, um, not only statewide but nationally. So, you know, we were able to look at both proposals and the search firm decided upon moving forward with Shane's consulting.
So we just, we just overlooked those two?
Basically, it wasn't overlooked, it was part of the decision.
Thank you so much.
So do you want to turn it over now to public comments or?
Yep.
Do we have any other?
Yes.
Nope, we can move to public comment.
Thanks, Shane. All right, so at this time, we will open it up to public comment. So anybody in the gallery, if you could just please state your name and your address. And then you will be given three minutes, um, to make comments.
Hello, my name is Blackwell, uh, 1200 Hill, sorry. Uh, I just want to give a little history. My organization, we've been up here as a non-profit for thirteen years. We was on Superior Street. Uh, we ran that for five years. We did a good job. We made our own money. We got to do this for our friend. We divested to our own building, fifteen thousand square feet. We reached out to Shane plenty of time about funding for our organization. Every time he get back with us, he always say, somebody want to buy your building or you can work with us, uh, for us. So I want to know, like this, this, this new people that can come inside, are they going to have that same mindset where the people saying they working with a black organization or minority business that we continue to be overlooked? I've been having my building for thirteen years. All my money that I made in Albea go toward taxes. People in this facility turned our building, took our, our building out under our taxes, their taxes. That mean that we don't have no power over our building under our nonprofit status. I talked to people that from other entities, they said Albea was wrong for doing that because there's a lot of people that have private business that they don't work with on taxes, that don't work with on finances. Why do double vision always get the better end of the stick? So we go into the paper saying we own taxes. But I'm going to take it to you, if I took your income away from you and tell you you pay your rent, how can you pay your rent if you took all my income? Every time I talk to any leadership in Albea, they give us the same excuses about you guys got to sit down and work with other people. I got my own, I'm registered to the state and the federal. I'm registered as a nonprofit. I'm the president of that organization. You can look my name up. It gonna come up, president of Double Vision Center. I still can't get the respect that I need to get my building up and running. But then I can look at a private business, get all this resource out of income, it's other entities. And Albea and I keep reaching out to these same entities, they say, well, you guys, it's not considered, oh, your building is a bad. I've been putting, we, my twin and I have put over sixty thousand dollars of our own money into that dang building and we continue to be overlooked. How much time do we got to keep spending money on that building and to keep reaching out to the city of Albea? And we keep reading the paper talking about you looking for a minority business in the downtown area. Will you consider, consider just slapping us in the face? Then the leaders here, then you get a recall, they trying to get a program start. One, trying to educate themselves more, then they get recalled by the same very people that y'all saying trying to help you. I mean, the same person up there saying they want to hear is, is head of, get you people recalled. So if you tell me how unfair, unfair y'all trying to say, or y'all saying we dumb, we stupid. You're not trying to work with a majority business. I don't even buy the newspaper, Albea newspaper no more because it's a joke.
Hello.
Hello.
Sean Manier, Wolf, my address is 315 Burnell Street. And so there's a couple of things that I want to, um, point out. I hope that, uh, I see Mr. Williamson is still online listening. So I hope that you've heard the concerns from Mr. Brewer. And I think, um, this is obviously personal to me because I have had, uh, Mayor Snyder and Mr. Williamson show up in my place of, of volunteerism and tell me that I had a conflict interest. And if this isn't a conflict interest, I don't know what is. Because your number one client is going to be one of the main, um, people working with the EDC. So how does it make sense for you to have anything to do with choosing who the next EDC director is? One, two, um, there are only two qualifications on that RFQ. So if you decided not to pay attention to those qualifications, other people could have applied. So instead of making the qualifications, they sort of been preferences. So by skipping those qualifications, you actually violate a city policy by approving an RFQ that wasn't what was put out. Which causes another issue, right? It makes people say, what's actually going on? So the third thing, I think, um, based on the question, based on Mr. Williamson actually saying, you know, he does not meet those qualifications. I think what's going to be really important, if you want people to support anything that this firm does, is to put out his application. There's ways to redact company names. So if he's done business with, um, any sort of municipalities, any other governments, any other ADC, AEDC type firms, that can be put out there without disclosing who those people are that he's working with. That's really simple. I work for a municipality, I know how that goes. Um, and also I think it's going to be important to show the qualifications from the other firm. Those are all public documents that could be for you. Don't waste the taxpayers' time doing that. Show them that the decision that you guys made was a good decision by putting that out there upfront. Because you already know what people are saying. Um, the third thing is, so if, if we have a sort of issue within the city council, who's also a part of deciding who's going to come and work with our community, right? Pending between the former councilman, who is also a consultant, I guess. Um, I think we probably should have thought about that more before we decided to put him in charge of anything that had to do with the city this quickly. Um, it just feels like poor taste. Um, but like I said, at the end of the day, if you guys, or if you feel like the decision you made is appropriate, and you feel like the decision you made makes sense, put that information out there for us to see. Because when I read through the RFQ, I was just like, there's, there's no way that this consulting firm meets that, meets those qualifications. So make that make sense to us, and then that way we don't have to come and ask these questions in a public meeting. Thank you.
Here at Brown, 1016 South Superior Street, Albea. Okay, so I'm going to just start very plainly, I'm going to thank the council for calling the study session. Um, but then I want to say that, um, the selected firm does not meet the qualifications outlined in the quest for proposals, state qualifications. Um, the RFQ actually says, quote, "Each respondent shall, so must, within the past thirty-six months, have worked with a public entity like the EDC to conduct executive recruitment." I don't see how you can choose someone who does not meet the requirement. Um, I, I understand myself as an Albea native and a young professional who's tried to make it in his hometown. I understand it's sending grace and opportunity to a local firm, I can get that. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we lower our standards to help our friends. Williamson Consulting does not have a recognized track record of vetting competitive national candidates. And then, and then also with the priority with, uh, on diversity. Um, so I understand the predicament that the council is in tonight because the AC board is who you appoint. Um, and they have one of this process, but I think it's a legitimate, there's some concerns raised about that. Um, but there are things you can do. So the charter does give you all power to call in officers of the city to the meetings to compel them to attend. And that's actually how we started Amy giving her work reports. So when you ask her if they're not here, you can order them to come to the action of the council. You have that power. You also have the power if you feel that, uh, the board is not listening to your concerns. I know the mayor sits by virtue of office. Um, but everyone else on that board can be, you will appoint them, but you also can remove them. And I think the concern is that, I, I, some of the questions have already, have already been raised. I'd want to know, um, what was the proposal that was submitted by Williamson Consulting? What was the other proposal? How much is he getting paid? How much was the bid price for the other, uh, firm? Uh, questions like, uh, you know, sometimes you have firms, you'll have, uh, sometimes you have search processes. A board will assign a committee. Does the committee come back to the full board? We know that the four people that committee actually gave a full report back to the full EDC to make that decision. Was there a vote? Um, so I'm, I'm really concerned about it because I think that what happens in Albea in my last called second secret is, it's, it's very incessant, right? I, I know that the mayor sits on the community foundation board, right? I would have questions about the fact that the EDC leases its building from the community foundation. So what, what kinds of, um, those are just questions to ask legally, but then also just the optics of it. It's very self-dealing. And I think that, just to echo what Mr. Brewer has said, we really need, uh, leadership that's going to know what they're doing, but also not privileged to certain segments or entities in the community. And I, I'd want to know, again, I think it's going to be very interesting to see what those proposals were. So, uh, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Tetris Williams. I'm at 504 West Erie Street. As a young minority entrepreneur, I know that there are a lot of different things. I agree with, um, what Mr. Brewer said and also some of the council, um, members up here said, they are. But it's very important that we provide opportunities and grant funding and, and as well as loans and different things so people have higher backgrounds. Diversity is what drives our communities. If we look at our community needs assesses, that's very important. We have a lot of things that we're lacking in this community. And I know there are a lot of inequities as well. So we need someone that's interested in diversity, inequities, um, and able to bring in those needs that we need in this community. I have children live here. I have family that come here from out of town. And it's sad to say, when they come, I have to take them thirty minutes to an hour away just for my nieces and nephews to have somewhere to play, other than at the park, for example. So I think it's very important that those individuals that come in and interview for this position, that they have an investment in this community. The entrepreneurs that are here, they're here because they're invested in this community, not because, um, they have to be here. A lot of them can go to larger population scales where there are more people in those different environments. I know Albea, and I don't know the population itself, but I would say it's about ten thousand or less. And what I know as an entrepreneur as well is that someone told me years ago, I come from a very community larger scale where there's a lot of diversity, um, in minority business owners. But what I know, what an entrepreneur told me is that people will drive to your business for the service and for the, um, the services that you provide. So Albea is small. We don't always have to attract residents of Albea. We want them to come to be able to be in our business to, um, spend their dollars and, and socialize and network and be able to support our businesses. But how do we attract somebody that's going to be able to come in from Lansing, um, Grand Rapids? I know I drove to Grand Rapids to see some business owners just because of the things that they offer in Grand Rapids, Detroit, all those different environments. We need somebody that's invested in the community, that want growth opportunities and bring something here.
Would anybody else like to stand and make a public comment?
Signed around 713 Orchard Drive. I second everything that I've heard in the public comments and then in a lot of the council members' questions. So to not be redundant, I'm just going to announce that the EDC has a meeting on Thursday this week, seven thirty, eight AM. And this is on their agenda, uh, and there are two public comment opportunities on that agenda. So if you can make it to the EDC meeting on Thursday at seven thirty, I'll see you then. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Lee, did you have a comment you want to make?
I've heard a couple of references that says, Mayor is on...
I'm sorry, what was that?
On, on, on this committee. You, you're on this committee?
Mm-hmm.
I had also heard that you, city manager, are on this committee?
I'm not on the committee. I serve just as a representative from the city. I'm not on, I'm not on the EDC board, so I'm not on the actual committee.
So it's Ed Haas, Betty Wall, Anita Suplesby, and Mayor Snyder. You are the ones that's on this committee?
Mm-hmm.
And that's it?
And do you have somebody on the public comment?
It's Level Four, right?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for, um, hosting this session. Um, I, I appreciate the ability for the, the public to have a chance to, um, take a look at things like economic development. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, reemphasize the, the purpose of economic development being the creation of wealth in which the community benefits. And, um, the concerns that I've raised today are, are really important considering the... And, um, the concerns that I've raised today, um, are, are really important considering the, the current economic standing of our city with so many people struggling to meet basic needs, over, over sixty percent. I think it's really important that we're taking a comprehensive look at, at where we stand economically and thinking about that as we're, um, looking ahead and, and having this opportunity to, um, bring in new talent to our city. So I just wanted to emphasize some of the goals that, um, I've been most concerned about working in this space for, um, the last several years. So I saw that one of the goals that the EDC has is providing goods and services that are most desired by businesses, workforce, and the residents. And I'm just curious if, if that's something that we've actually really established, what is most desired by our, our current residents? And if so, where that information lives so that it can continue to evolve and really reflect our residents. I'm also, um, interested in, uh, one of the other goals I saw from the EDC as the building of consensus and cooperation for creating a communication and trust infrastructure that identifies a vision and direction for the community. Um, as, as we're hearing concerns and, and not really seeing where they're being formally addressed, I think that, again, having this information available for people to continue to weigh in, um, as more and more people learn about the importance of these goals. Um, so I, I just wanted to make sure that those, those goals were highlighted and that we do make this information more accessible to people going forward.
Thank you.
Is it, um, um, council comments?
Yep, if nobody else wants to stand and make a comment. Yep, so council member comments?
Uh, yes, I, I just wanna say that it's, it's really sad that, um, this committee overlooked the two most important qualifications, um, to do this search. When, um, we always, um, look at people's qualifications when we're giving them a, a job. It just, uh, didn't kinda sit right with me. Um, and I do want the, uh, council to know that if we, we pay some of the portion of, uh, the EDC CEO, president, and if we are not happy, we, we can always find a way to out, out of that. Um, so I'm just putting that out there. But, but it's really sad that we overlooked these two qualifications. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? The motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support. City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Meeting adjourned, seven forty PM.